Since everybody's quiet, I'll call our meeting to order. I appreciate everybody's patience. Dr. Kingman arrived and then he got a call right as he got here. I was trying to wait for him, but he'll be coming in shortly. So this is a regular meeting. The Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School Districts held on Monday, December 14th, beginning at 5:45 PM. We, the first item on our agenda is to call our meeting to order and establish the fact that we have a quorum. We do have a quorum of our board team here. Our second item on our agenda is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have the senior pastor from Glen Meadows Baptist Church, Mac Roller, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
Show me a prayer. Father, we thank you so much for your presence, for your glory, for the way in which you speak to us. Lord, we thank you that you've told us that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. And Lord, we just pray that you would give us wisdom tonight. I thank you for the men and women present. And Lord, I pray that you would bless them immensely. Lord, I pray for our students. Lord, I pray for their souls, for their protection, for their body, for their minds. Lord, we just entrust them to you because you are so good to us. Father, we love you and we thank you for this time of year where we just celebrate your incredible love and the way you gifted us your son. Lord, we pray this in the blessed name of Jesus. Amen.
Thanks Pastor Roller. And I probably should mention too that one of our board members is quarantining Ms. Mizelle Flint, so she'll be with us via Zoom. But, so if y'all kind of, she'll be on the screen at some point in time as we go through our meeting, but I should have mentioned that earlier. So right now we have our pledges. We're honored this evening to have three awesome young men from Holloman Elementary School, and I'll introduce their names as they come up. So we have Gavin Finley, Jack Hampton, and Jaden Smallwood. So if y'all would stand up, they'll lead us in our pledges.
Pardons. Pardons. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, under Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank y'all. And if anybody's parents or anybody want to come up, y'all can come up a little closer, guys.
Hold on, guys. Hold on. Your parents can take your picture.
Yeah, y'all can come up and get as close as you like.
Close as you want, Mom.
Boys, social distancing, that's perfect. Good job. Thank y'all for being here. All those young men are fifth graders at Holloman. Next on our agenda is our, let me read our script and then we'll go for our recognitions. Good evening and welcome as President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District. I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of our meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets and contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I'll make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on either on items not on our agenda or on our agenda, please limit your comments to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that our tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's a pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. I thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our district and the business of our district. So we'll now go to item four, which is our recognitions. Ms. Whitney Wood and Ms. Johnson, Molly Johnson, are going to handle our recognition, our first recognition.
So for those of you that are joining, watching on Facebook Live, we are going to switch out for this first recognition. And so your screen might go blank for just a second. We're going to do this one in-person recognition as we switch out now for a video.
Tonight, we have a very special recognition honoring an outstanding community partner and supporter of public education and literacy, the San Angelo Area Foundation. The Area Foundation is a community foundation whose mission is to improve the quality of life in the San Angelo area by assisting philanthropic individuals aggregate funds to benefit the area. Championing literacy with San Angelo ISD aligns with and is a great component of that mission. Today, we recognize the Area Foundation for the unique gift of a very special book, San Angelo A to Z, that we, that they were giving to each and every one of our San Angelo ISD third graders. Last Wednesday, as part of San Angelo Reads Day, they all got their very own copy to take home to read and learn more about the city. That's over a thousand books in the hands of kids at a critical age where they transitioned to reading to learn. Truly, a special gift to promote reading and learning beyond the classroom walls. Tonight, we are very honored to have joining with us and accepting this recognition for the Area Foundation, President and CEO Matt Lewis, and Vice President of Development and Marketing, Ms. Janet Carter. Dr. Dethloff, at this time, would you please help me recognize the Area Foundation? Mr. Lewis and Ms. Carter, would you please come forward? We will also be gifting, as part of this recognition, to our Board of Trustees for your literacy support and dedication to our students, a copy of the San Angelo A to Z book, courtesy our friends at San Angelo Area Foundation. So if y'all can each, if you have your mask, put on your mask and come join us for a photo with your book, we'd really appreciate it. Yes. Well, we have the copies that they each have. We are so very appreciative of you and especially our third grade students that got to take on the very own special book. Mr. Lehman, are we going to the student athlete?
Yeah, we're going to go to the, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. The Area Foundation does so much for our community, so it's nice that they stepped up and helped us. Thank y'all so much. We really appreciate it. Our next item is actually the recognition of Central and Lakeview athletes who made it past district level in district level competition, and Dr. Gomez is going to work on that for us.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Dethloff, and members of the board. This evening, we have for you our outstanding student achievements in our SISD fall sports for those student athletes who advance beyond district. Oh, maybe. I swear for it. So first, we have for you, from Central High School, Coach Meek. I think Coach Meek is on for us.
All right, thank you. I just want to kind of start by saying thanks a lot to the, to the school board administration for allowing us to do this. You know, we always love the opportunity to get to brag on our kids, and with this year, the way things are, you never know, but we do appreciate that this, this opportunity to get to, to get to give them some recognition. You know, we started working out June 8th, as soon as the UIL allowed us to, really not knowing what was going to happen, not knowing if we were going to make it to, to a meet, much less make it to the whole season. But you know, I feel very fortunate and blessed that we were, not only did we make it to the first meet, but we, we made it all the way through the season, all the way through the regional meet, without ever having to quarantine one varsity athlete. So we felt very, very fortunate about that. I think the first slide there is the kind of our overall team. Okay, this was in the, in the summer, we took this team photo, and obviously you can probably kind of tell, they took individual pictures and then they photoshopped it together. But that was kind of the start of it, and a bunch of just great kids. I feel very fortunate, again, to get to coach, to get to coach these kids and get to work with them. Our coaches, Coach Brewer, Josh Brewer, and Landon Dyer are the two coaches that I get to work with. They're, they're great coaches and even better people, and I feel very fortunate to get to work with the coaches that I get to work to. I really, really appreciate them. You know, the, the UIL, as soon as they sent out word about what was going to happen, you know, we were waiting to see what was going to happen, and they sent out, the first notification said that they were only going to accept or advance the top two teams in district to the regional meet. So we knew we had our work cut out for us. You know, normally it's the top three. Cross country is, is one of the sports that doesn't get that top four advancement, and so, you know, it really put the pressure on us. And so we feel very fortunate that we were, we were able to get one boy out, and then we were able to get our, our entire girls team out. And I'm going to, I'll start by talking about our, our boy, Christopher Banks, CJ Banks. He, he's a sophomore, and he ended up seventh place at the district meet out of all the runners. He was seventh individually, which, which earned him first team all district. Like I said, he's a sophomore. He's been our top runner every meet except for one that I can think of in the last, in the last two years. So he's a great kid. He ran a great race at district and went on and ran very well at regionals, and so we feel very fortunate that we have CJ and very, very proud of CJ. We'll move on to the girls. I've got a few pictures of the girls. Very excited about this group. They are the 268 district champions. A great group of kids, like I said, hard workers in the classroom. They're great students, just, just great people. They're going to go on to do big things. The second shot there we have is, of course, the, it's not complete until you have the, the jumping photo, so that was, we thought that was pretty cool, but they were excited. That was just, just moments after we had been awarded the trophy. And to see it in writing makes it even better. I put the, I put the score, the scorecard on there. You know, we, we felt like early on, if we ran great, I mean, lights out, we might have a shot at, at being a top two finisher. And then we, we knew if we were going to beat friendship, that it was going to be within a point or two, and so I put that there to show that. Not only did we, did we win it, but those girls went out and, and they, they just took it and, and won by 22 points. So we're very proud of those girls. Just going to kind of go through in alphabetical order. Alyssa Brewster, she is second team all district. The way that they, the top 10 individuals, they, they call first team all district, and the next, the next 10 are second team all district, and we had all seven of our runners in the top 16, I believe, so we feel very fortunate about that. Alyssa is a junior. We've had her for three years and really look forward to having her one more year. Next is Bella Coste Aja. She was second team all district. She, that picture there on the left, she was our Hollins Award winner last year, and then she was the Hollins Award winner again this year, you know, voted on by the athletes, so that's a very special award. The picture on the far right, she was just a freshman whenever the team won district in 2017. So she's a senior that we're definitely, definitely going to hate to lose, but we're glad that we've, we've had her, her leadership for four years. Jordan Harris is another senior. She's been with us since she was a sophomore. She was a track kid. We begged her to come out and run, and she came out and has done a great job, a great athlete, and really a great, a great leader as well. So we're, hate that we're going to lose her, but she's going to go on to do big things as well. Jolie Nguyen, she was second team all district. She is a senior who we, has been with us for two years, and again, we, we beg and plead whatever we can do to get kids out. It's a tough sport, not, there's not a big line of kids that want to do it, so we feel very fortunate whenever we can get a kid out that really helped us. And Jolie was one that really has helped us over the last two years, and a senior that we're going to hate to lose. McKenna McMillan, she was first team all district. She was our top runner by finishing fifth at the district meet. She's a freshman, and she's our only freshman on the team this year. Super excited about her, great athlete, great kid, and we feel really fortunate that we get to have her for three more seasons. Alana Navah, she was first team all district. She's a junior. She's been, been one of our top runners really all three years, the last two years, the majority of the time she was probably our top runner. She earned first team all district. I believe she finished seventh at district, so she would have advanced to regionals even if the team didn't. So again, she's a junior, really excited about having her back as a senior next year. And last but not least is Bella Ibarra, first team all district. She's a kid that was a sprinter in track, and, and we, we felt like she had, she had some natural ability as a distance runner, and did some begging and pleading, and finally got her out this year, and she ended up placing ninth overall at district, so she was first team all district. And, you know, we hate that we're, hate that we're losing her, but we feel very fortunate, and I think she would say the same thing. She really enjoyed it coming out and running this year, and so we, we look forward to big things from her. And then just, you know, last but not least, again, I want to say thanks a lot to the school board, administration for all of your support. You know, we couldn't do what we do without each and every one of you, so thank you so much. Also want to say congratulations to all the other athletes from Lakeview and Central and coaches that are being recognized. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Meek. Next up, we have Coach Leeper from Lakeview High School, cross country.
I am so excited that we're able to do this virtually. I really appreciate that you guys took the time to still recognize us even in the midst of everything that's going on, and this could have easily been something to just overlook or to cancel altogether, and I really appreciate the board still recognizing the athletes that, that worked so hard to earn these awards, so I really appreciate it. So this year for cross country, it was very, I mean, up in the air. There were, we were always worried that, you know, practices were going to get canceled or meets were going to get changed around some more, and it, it was a very frustrating time, and Coach Bliski and I, you know, we, we tried to hold, hold it together and keep the faith, you know, that everything was going to work out great, and the kids worked so hard, even though, you know, everything was up in the air and we never knew what was going to happen next. And so all of the kids should be recognized, but these kids definitely went above and beyond and, I mean, accomplished some major feats. So the first athlete that I'd like to recognize is my senior, who we're going to miss very much, John Gloria. He is a third year runner. He didn't run his freshman year. I, I met him in track his freshman year, and he decided he could run really far and really fast, so we kidnapped him for cross country, and he is somebody that every team should have on their team because he's a great leader. He always puts his team before himself, and he encourages everybody, and we are definitely, definitely going to miss him. He is a regional qualifier. He ended up placing sixth at district, so he was able to advance as an individual for the first time for him, so that was a really great, and it was really exciting because it was a senior year, so it was really good. Our next runner is Justin Vasquez. He is a sophomore, and he's been on the team for two years. He's also a regional qualifier. He placed 10th at district, and he's not very excited about this picture because he had just finished racing and was really tired, but it was the best picture that we had, and it shows the two boys and their medals at the finish line and how hard that they really, really worked. Our next runner that I'd like to recognize is Faith Miller. She's a sophomore, a two-year runner on our team, and she also qualified for regionals by placing 10th at district. And so we were really excited that we were able to get a girl out as an individual because it's been a while since we've had girls advance. Like, we don't always have a bunch of girls, but it's, Faith is a really good leader, and she's setting a really good example for the rest of our runners. I'd also like to recognize the whole boys team on the next slide. They placed third at district, which normally would advance them as a team to regionals. However, with the COVID rules, they only took the top two teams. So in my heart, I'm still considering them regional qualifiers, but because of COVID, they could not make it as regional qualifiers, but we're still very proud of them nonetheless.
Next up, we have from Central High School, Coach Abalaz for Central High School Tennis.
Hey, everyone. I'd just like to thank from the beginning, thank y'all for doing this. It's great to recognize the kids as well, and thank you to the administration and everybody who had a hand in everything that goes into this. I know it's been a crazy year and the protocol and all the procedures, and so everything that y'all lined out for us as coaches was, has been great and helped us get through the season without quarantining and any of that. We didn't have any of that affect us throughout our, our season, so, you know, thank y'all for that. That was a big help. And I want to give a shout out to my parents. My parents were huge this year, which they are every year. You know, they're always there to support. They come out full force, whether it's the, you know, bringing waters for kids or donations or the support overall, you know. It starts with them, I say, you know, without them buying into the program, it's hard to get the kids to buy into the program, so I just want to say thank you to my parents and the administration for all the help and support they've given us throughout the year. I'm going to talk about this first slide if I can for a second. I don't know, it kind of disappeared on my end. All right, yeah, this is our, one of our team photos we used earlier this year before we took our actual team photo, but, you know, we were 14 and 7 on the year. Normally, we would have a lot more matches, but we weren't able to start till after Labor Day, so we were 14 and 7 on the year. We were 5 and 1 in district. We were the district two 6A runner-up, the bi-district champions, the area champions. We had an epic match against Byron Nelson, and we won 10-9. We came back from being down 8-5, got to 8-all. I believe we went down, we got to 9-all, and then our last match, one of our senior girls, number six, Kaia Pong Savanthong pulled it out. It was epic. It was a total team effort, and we won that match 10-9 to move on to the regional round, and we ran into South Carol, which they were, they were pretty good, but we competed and we hung in there, and we couldn't have been more proud of our kids for the year. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce, in two parts per se, I'm going to do our, our kiddos that, that they got all district honors, and then I'm also going to do some of the kids that, behind the scenes that made that happen, that pushed our kids to do that. So the coaches, I'm the head coach, Brenn Abalaz, and then we have the world's greatest assistant coach you could possibly ask for. Her name's Coach Brianna Creek. Without her, the wheels would fall off and the gears would stop turning, and so I'd just like to give her a big shout out for everything that she does for the kids and myself behind the scenes, and, you know, she may not get all that recognition up front, but she's a huge part of this program. So I'm going to go ahead and go into the kids. We'll go, I used the kids, we had some banners made for our tennis courts this year. We were really fortunate in the event that we got those made, and so while we do have a lot of pictures of the kids playing tennis, I went ahead and used these, so I don't know if they're actually for it or against it, but I figured why not? They look really good. So first off is our senior, Hallie Jost. She was a line one girl singles all district honorable mention and line one girls doubles second team all district. She's a senior, she's been on varsity all four years, and we're going to miss her. Next, we'll go to senior Kelsey Bishop. She was line two girl singles all district honorable mention and line two girls doubles second team all district. We'll go to the next slide. Our junior Trinity Fluger, she was line three girl singles first team all district, line two girls doubles second team all district. And then I'll go, we'll go to the next slide. Sophomore Kenzie King, she was number four, line four girl singles first team all district, and line one mixed doubles second team all district. Next up is our senior Kaori Neal. She was line five girl singles first team all district and line one girls doubles second Next up is our senior that had the, the big win for us against the Byron Nelson match. It's Kaia Pong Savanthong. Her last name has like 16 letters in it, and I won't miss writing it. I'll miss her, I'll miss her a lot. She was line six girl singles first team all district. Next up is Victoria Elder Jr. She was line three girls doubles first team all district. We have senior McKenna DeBitch, line three girls doubles first team all district. Okay, before we get to these, I want to say about those, those kids previously, all of, all of our, all of our kids that played in those playoff matches in, in district, every single one of them received an all district honor, whether they were honorable mention, first team all district, or second team all district. So I would like to just say that goes a long way for our program and what it says about all our kids, that each and every one of them were able to receive something. So next up, these kids, the, the next ones that I'm going to announce, they may have been behind the scenes, and they may have not have gotten to play all the time in every district match or not, but they made the wheels go round, and they pushed the rest of the athletes to get better and do the things that we did, and so we're a team, and so I would love to give them a shout out as well because they had a role just as much as everybody else. So senior Ariseli Ramirez. Now, we'll move into the boys side. I'm going to go through the list of the boys side that were, that played throughout district and their recognition and their honors, and then we'll move on to the ones that made the, the wheels go around. So senior Richie Ramos, line one bull singles second team all district, and line one boys doubles second team all district. Senior Cameron Coker, number two boys singles second team all district and line two boys doubles second team all district. Junior Orion Shaik, line three boy singles all district honorable mention and line two boys doubles second team all district. Junior Orion Shake, line-three boy singles, all district honorable mention and line-two boys doubles, second-team all district. Junior Sam Campasi, line-one boys doubles, second-team all district. Sophomore Nate James, line-five boy singles, second-team all district, line-one mixed doubles, second-team all district. Freshman Colin Honi, line-six boys singles, all district honorable mention. Freshman Brent Wilcox, line-three boys doubles, second-team all district. Junior Gabe James, line-three boys doubles, second-team all district. And then we're going to get to, um, like I said, the ones that make the wheels go around, that really pushes us every day. Um, that make the other kids, make the other kids better and uh, they make our team what it is. So uh, senior Austin Contreras. Zach Carpenter, sophomore Zach Carpenter. Sophomore Ryan Hildebrand. Sophomore Justin Contreras. Freshman Davis Calhoun. And freshman Carter Lyles. Again, I'd just like to say thank you for um, everything y'all do and for allowing us to do this for the kids and uh, sick 'em cats.
Thank you, Coach. Next up, from Lakeview High School, Coach Herman.
Hi, and again, I do want to say thank you to the school board and the administration for putting this on. Um, even though we can't be there in person, I know this means a lot to the kids and it kind of puts a bright side on everything that's going on and is, and we're able to showcase our accomplishments. So thank you again. Um, firstly, I want to say, um, I like to describe our season this year as unique and and you know, I, I wouldn't change it for anything. Um, we normally start practicing in, in July and due to COVID, you know, we, we couldn't do that. And so I had kids messaging me on remind, hey, Coach, when are we going to practice? When are we going to practice? When are we going to practice? And unfortunately, you know, I didn't have a straight answer for them, but you know, the fact that they were so determined to come to practice in the middle of their summer just kind of blew my mind. Um, we normally start early August and again, we play a lot of five-A teams. Um, and due to COVID, um, we couldn't play them until later. So we didn't get as many matches in as we would like. Um, but not once did the kids complain about the constant change of schedules or me changing practice times or there was no complaints. So um, they're just great and I could talk for hours about them, but um, I won't do that. But um, anyways, um, I do want to shout out um, our new assistant coach this year, Coach Craig Horner. Um, this is his first year at Lakeview. He's been great. Um, the kids love him. I'm really appreciative of everything he does, especially behind the scenes, and we're really happy to have him. And on the next slide, um, Lakeview, the Lakeview Tennis Program really lives by these three words and I think us um, having pride, dedication and family and going by that really contributes to the success that we've had um, during our season. Um, they take pride in who they are and they take pride in their team. They're dedicated to be a better person, a better teammate and a better player every day, whether we're playing a match or whether we're in practice or whether we're in the playoffs. Um, they really do dedicate themselves a hundred percent of the time. And then family, most importantly, um, these three words really mean a lot to these kids and I truly think that without them, um, we wouldn't be as successful. It just kind of motivates them to um, do their best. So on the next slide, um, we really, this season, our goal was to get further than we did last year. We've been pretty successful for the last three years. Um, we ended up with three golden balls this year. Um, there's a picture on the next slide, I think, with all three golden balls and there's a story behind these balls. Um, I actually received them and they were in a big box and um, they were not assembled. They were in pieces. And so when I pulled them out to show the kids, I was like, oh, I have to put them together? And you know, on the bottom, you have to screw them in. And so I was like showing the kids and I was like, okay, well, we'll have to put them together later. I don't have a screwdriver. And I actually had a kid was like, oh, I have one. And he goes and gets a whole toolbox from his truck and starts coming in and they all start putting these trophies together and it was really cool to watch. Um, they were just super excited to have something tactile to show their success and to showcase all their accomplishments. So um, that was, I'll never forget that. It was, it was hilarious. But um, we ended up uh, district champions, bi-district champions and area champions. Um, we went to regionals, um, and we played Seminole. We fell short, but it was a great season. Um, we, we went as far as we did last year and so that was our goal. So that was awesome. Um, on the next slide, oh, this just shows um, um, one of our seniors. Uh, the parents are great. They have like signs that they make right before our matches are over, like they know we're going to win, like and they have these already. So um, but three years in a row, we ended up area champions. So that's awesome. And for our all-district awards, um, we had two athletes get MVP, both boys and girls. Um, on the next slide, I think it says we have thirteen athletes that received first-team all-district awards. Um, every single doubles team earned first-team all-district. So all three teams on the boys' side and all three teams on the girls' side. Um, we ended up with four with um, second-team all-district and two for honorable mention. Um, here's a picture of the boys with the trophies. Normally, it's the girls that want the pictures, but this time um, the boys couldn't wait to get in front of the cameras. That was, that was cool. Um, going into the individuals, um, senior Eric Torres. Um, he holds the number-one spot. Um, he was voted the boys' MVP for the entire district. All the other coaches had really good things to say about him. So that was good to hear. Um, he also was um, San Angelo ISD Scholar Athlete of the Week. Um, and he also, for line, um, line-one boy singles and doubles, he earned first-team all-district. Uh, Alicia Cappaccina uh, holds the number-one spot for the girls. She was also San Angelo ISD Scholar Athlete of the Week and she was also voted um, girls' MVP for the district as well. Um, for line-one, she earned first-team all-district for singles and doubles. Ethan Benavides, also a senior. Uh, there he, in that picture, he wanted a picture by himself with the award. So you know, I had to do that for him. Um, he earned first-team all-district for line-one and boys' doubles. Haley Torres, also senior. She holds the number-two girls' spot. Um, she also earned first-team all-district for both um, doubles and singles for line-two. Eric Ruiz, um, Junior. He holds the number-three boys' spot. He earned first-team all-district for line-two boys' doubles and first-team all-district for number-two boys' singles. Madison Getz holds the number-three spot for girls. She earned first-team all-district for both doubles and singles as well. Freddie Saseo uh, holds the number-four boys' spot. He earned first-team all-district for line-two boys' doubles and second-team all-district for line-four boys' singles. Veronica Morales, senior, holds the number-four girls' spot. She earned first-team all-district in line-two girls' doubles and first-team all-district for line-four girls' singles. Luke Harton, he's a new varsity member. He held the fifth spot on the boys' side. He earned first-team all-district for line-three boys' doubles and honorable mention for line-five boys' singles. Alyssa Lachuga, senior, holds the number-five girls' spot. First-team all-district for line-three girls' doubles and first-team all-district line-five girls' singles. Chase Daniels, also a new varsity member. He held the sixth spot on the boys' side. He earned first-team all-district for line-three boys' doubles and second-team all-district for line-six boys' singles. Analia Zamaron, also a new varsity member. She held the sixth spot on the girls' side. She earned second-team all-district for line-six girls' singles and first-team all-district at line-three girls' doubles. JC Carpenter is also a new varsity member. She was our mixed girl. She earned second-team all-district. Um, Seth Rangel, ours, also a new varsity member. He earned second-team all-district for mixed doubles as well. And we were fortunate enough to have three um, incredible freshmen that served as our varsity alternates. Um, I, I call them our heroes because they literally were able to step in when someone was hurt or someone was sick or someone had work or whatever it may be. They were able to step in in any spot that I needed to. Um, and I know that they're going to be a great addition um, next year to us. So Gabby Flores on the left, Kieran Sherman in the middle and Liz Mota on the right. Um, and again, thank you just to everybody. There's so many people to thank um, for the continuous support, you know, for myself and for the athletes throughout the season and throughout the situation that we had to be in. Um, but it really, truly does take a tribe to, to get us to where we are today. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Next up, we have volleyball from Central High School, Coach Williams.
Good evening. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to also thank uh, Dr. Detloff, um, all the members of the school board, the administration, Mr. Waters, uh, Coach Davis, Coach Chant and Coach Walker. Um, being my first year here, um, you all have really uh, opened arms and welcomed me in. And I appreciate the opportunity to work here in SA ISD and to also work at Central High School. Um, I kind of talked about it a little bit at our banquet, but I feel, you know, when thinking about this year and everything, I just, I feel blessed that, you know, first of all, we were given the opportunity to compete this year, um, when things looked like they were going south and we weren't really even sure if we were going to get to play. Um, so I appreciate the, the school district, um, the UIL and everybody working together to allow these, these athletes the opportunity to compete in the sports that they love. Um, I also want to thank my assistant coaches, uh, Coach Gonzalez. She was the varsity assistant slash JV volleyball coach this year. Um, Coach Millsap and Coach Byrd, who are our freshman coaches. They all do a wonderful job. Um, I would also like to thank Coach uh, Linderman down at Lee and her staff and Coach Sanders over at Glenn and her staff. Um, you know, without our middle schools, it's, it's tough to build a program. So you got to have, you know, kids being taught the fundamentals and learning that from the middle schools. And so um, everybody here is just, has been so welcoming and I, I truly appreciate it. Um, I also want to take this time to thank my parents um, and the Booster Club and any of the fans, you know, I know it, it might not have been what you wanted to do to sit in the stands in a mask, but you did it and, and you came out and you supported our athletes, you know, the volleyball players and, and all athletes. And so um, being socially distant and, and following the rules is, is something that we all had to put up with this year and I'm truly appreciative of everyone's support that you've given me um, and the Central Lady Cats. So um, with that being said, I guess we'll move on into our slideshow. Let's meet these lady cats. Uh, you know, I enjoyed getting to know them. I've only been here about six months or so, so not a lot of time with the seniors, but um, again, in the summer, once we got started, uh, it was just great. They, they were a breath of fresh air. Um, they all work hard, wonderful kids, um, and they, they light up my life every single day. So here's our, a team picture that we took this year, of course masked up bobcats, so looking good. Um, and then moving on to kind of what we were able to accomplish this year, uh, we did qualify for the playoffs. Um, and we made it to the bi-district round where we got beat out by a tough El Paso team. Um, you know, we, we looked old on paper, but we, we had a lot of young, young talent-wise or not talent, but it, but experience-wise, you know, kids playing and these kids were great, you know, they, they worked their butt off every single day and just they did whatever was asked of them. And so I, you know, I think it's an accomplishment for all these programs here represented tonight to have made the playoffs, you know, it's, it's truly amazing thing that we all did this season. So moving on into our um, individuals, we'll start off with our first-team all-district players. Uh, Maya Moore, who was a senior this year, um, not, not always a setter, but stepped up and, and decided that she would help out the team when we needed it. Um, and so she set for us this year. She had two-hundred-and-forty-five assists, ninety-seven digs, twenty-four kills and nineteen aces. The stats are for just during district play. Um, she probably had a few more than that. We had a very short preseason due to COVID. Um, so we played about, you know, twenty to thirty less games than we would normally play, but her stats, you know, speak for themselves. And also on Maya, she um, at our awards banquet was awarded the Hollands Award, um, voted on by the team. So um, you know, can't say enough about her and her leadership and she's someone that we will definitely miss. Our next uh, first-team all-district goes to Hannah Gomez. Uh, she's a senior this year. Uh, she played libero for us, um, and, and just did a, a really a tremendous job. Um, she had a hundred-and-sixty digs, twelve aces and passed a one-point-nine-four during district play. Um, just proud of her, again, stepping into a role that, something that she wasn't used to playing, but did it, you know, for her team and, and truly did a great job. She was a very, a very vocal leader for us this year on the court and she's definitely someone that we will miss um, next year. Our second-team all-districts, um, we have Amory Fly. She's a junior. She played outside hitter for us this year. Uh, she had fifty-six kills, seven blocks, eleven aces and fifty-nine digs during district play. Um, Amory, you know, just being a junior, she's definitely one that we're going to look to uh, next year, you know, to kind of step up and take over some of the leadership roles and, and fill in that responsibility. And I have no doubt that, that she will do that. Um, the other second-team all-district player we had this year was Cameron Daniels. Um, she's a senior. She was a middle blocker for us. She had seventy kills, uh, twenty-three blocks and eight aces during district play. She was our middle who went back and served and then had to step in and, and play defense. She's probably going to be a little sad I didn't put her digs on there, but she, she really did do a good job for us um, this year. And she's a senior who, who definitely will be missed again. Um, then we have our honorable mention all-district. Um, we'll start off with Ashton McMillan. She's a senior. She's a right-side hitter for us. Uh, she had forty kills and fourteen blocks during district play. Um, Ashton, you know, not the tallest kid we have, but she would get up on her blocks and, and really seal that net for us and, and do a great job for us. She she was also one of our, you know, kind of like pump-up leaders. She got the team going. She's a, she's a firecracker and I look forward to watching her play a little softball this year. She'll have a, a great future ahead of her playing softball for Angelo State. Um, the next honorable mention all-district we have is Grace Vincent. She's a senior. She played DS for us this year. Grace had uh, ninety-six digs. She had 96 digs, 11 aces, and a 1.91 passing percentage during district play. You know, another senior, these seniors, like I said, I wish they were all juniors and I could have them all again because I just, I love them so much and got, you know, so used to having them around that for such a short time, it's going to be sad to see them go. But I know they're going to go on to bigger and better things. So our next honorable mention all district goes to Ella Burns. She is a junior defensive specialist for us. Ella had 55 digs, 11 aces, and passed a 1.80 during district play. You know, being a junior, again, we look forward to really, really good things from Ella next year. I know she's already kind of wanting to get in there and have a shot at being the libero. And so I know she's competitive and she'll get it done, you know, hopefully. So looking for good things out of Ella next year. And then we have a really, really smart team. Their GPAs are some of the highest I've ever seen and have ever had as a coach. But not in any particular order, but we have making academic all district for us this year. Hannah Gomez, Landry Barton, Peyton Mayberry, Maya Moore, Ella Burns, Morgan Strain, Ashton McMillan, Julia Morales, and Amory Fly. You know, and again, I just think it speaks to the type of girls that these girls are. You know, they care about their academics, they care about their schoolwork, they care about, you know, being good volleyball players and good teammates. And I've just truly, really enjoyed this year in getting to know them. Finally, again, just a huge thank you to all the administration. Like I said before, Mr. Waters, Coach Davis, Coach Walker, Dr. Detloff, and the fans and players. You know, it wasn't an easy season, but hey, we're Lady Cat tough. And I think we definitely showed that this year. So thank you again for all of your support. And again, congratulations, kind of like Coach Meek said, to all the other coaches and teams who are on here being recognized tonight. And thank you for everybody who's watching this on Facebook Live. You know, it is a joy that we get to still represent these kids and recognize these kids. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Coach. Next up from Lakeview High School, Coach Vazquez. Coach, I think you're still muted.
Hello. Good evening. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for tuning us in. I think one of the things that this year that we've had is conflict after conflict after conflict. And putting this together just shows how our district has been able to overcome all these things. So putting this together to recognize our athletes is just, it's huge for us, especially when they're going through such unprecedented times and all these times of uncertainty. So I want to introduce the Lakeview maidens for volleyball. I want to start with our first slide. So head coach and myself, Luis Vazquez. Assistant coaches, Coach Alicia Ketner and Coach Peggy Eubank. And our trainers, Rikelsie Vanderburg and Troy Wilde. So for 2020, our season accomplishments, something huge. We were coming off after our shutdown back in March and were able to pick up back everything in June 8. And I could feel that the girls were hungry during the summer. We had a great turnout during our summer workouts. We had great attendance throughout the entire time. And they were working hard every morning, every morning showing up at 7:30 in the morning, going through our workouts, going through our practices. And that reflected going into the season. We had way fewer games than the previous year. We were taken away from the opportunity of attending tournaments, which is something big for us to be able to start that teamwork, that, starting that chemistry. But the girls were able to overcome that. We had an overall record of 14-12. Our district record this year was 5-6, and that put us in a fourth seed. Having that opportunity to have a playing game and qualifying to the playoffs after beating Levelland in that playing game, which was also a whole story in itself, having to, due to inclement weather, having to move that game forward, having the girls to bring their stuff the day of because of the inclement weather. And again, I always describe these girls as resilient because they're able to overcome conflicts like this. But they were able to qualify to playoffs after six years. So that was something good for us. Moving on into our district awards. Our first team all district was Michaela Wagner. She's a junior. She's our outside hitter. Her stats consisted of 264 digs, 97 kills, 10 blocks, and 16 aces. And this was all during district play. Michaela has just been huge out there for us in the court. Definitely a leader. Very excited that she'll be back here again. And I'm excited to see her senior season. Our second recipient for first team all district was Kelly Jackson. She's our senior. Kelly functioned as both as a setter and a right side. We ran a 6-2 and she got to play all the way around. She racked up 199 assists, 160 digs, 44 kills, and 19 aces. All of this in 10 games of district plays, which is some really good numbers. Again, our captain, she was also a leader in the court and we're certainly going to miss her. Our third recipient for a district award, we had a second team all district nomination for Angelina Valero. She was our libero. She's a junior. She racked up 211 digs, 21 assists, and 14 aces. Angelina was just complete. She took over that backcourt, was able to control the players around her and let her, they trusted her with that first touch of the ball and running the tempo of our offense. Our next one is our honorable mentions for district awards. And we had four of them. We had Brandy Coward, our middle blocker sophomore. She's also a second-year returning varsity, so she'll... And then we have Kimani Harston, a freshman, middle blocker as well. She did great things for us this year, end season and during district play. Emma Guevara, first-year varsity player as well. Very impactful player. We were able to use her both pins on right side and outside. And then we had Caravella, which is our senior. Hate to see her go as well, but she was also one of the girls that was able to take care of that backcourt and help us out with the leadership in our defense. This award is probably the one I'm the most proud of. It's our all-academic award. And I always told our girls about the importance of taking care of stuff in the classroom. We had nine out of our 12 girls qualify for all-academic. And all-academic consists of having a 94-plus GPA. So in no specific order, we have Angelina Valero, sophomore, which was our libero. Kimani Harston, freshman, which is our middle blocker. Emily O'Donnell, freshman, which is our second setter. Caravella, senior, she was our defensive specialist. Analia Pinera, senior, she was our outside hitter. Emma Guevara, sophomore, right side. Michaela Wagner, junior, outside. Brandy Coward, sophomore, middle blocker. And Ally Flores, sophomore, defensive specialist. A last award for Lakeview volleyball. I received the honor to get nominated for co-coach of the year. And some of these bullets that I put out here just reflects on what everything happened as a program. None of this could have been possible without the help of our assistant coach and JV head coach, Alicia Ketner, and our freshman coach, Peggy Eubank. Great, great help. There was days where I didn't know where my head was and they were there to help me through it. I mean, just from last year, being my first year and then going into COVID situation, coming back with all these protocol situations. And it was just really hectic at times where I didn't know how I was going to go through it. And they were able to help me. But some of these stats that I'm most proud of, this district record, we improved from last year going 0-8 in district to 5-6. Again, district seed. Last year, we had a district that consisted of eight teams and we were eighth seed. This year, we had a district seed that improved to fourth. We qualified to playoffs for the first time in six years. We had two first-team all-district selections, one second-team all-district selection, and nine all-academic selections. And that again, I want to close up by thanking the board, everyone out there in the athletic office that never got tired of my calls and questions, the administrators here at school, Coach Guevara and Coach Dawson, that have been my mentors since I walked in here to Lakeview. Coach Ketner, Coach Eubank, thank you a lot for another amazing season. And lastly, I want to thank my parents and my son that's watching the live stream. Asked me to give him a shout out. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Coach. And next up, we have Coach Guevara for Lakeview Football.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. First off, I'd like to congratulate, or thank everybody, everybody that put their hands in putting this together, technology and everybody involved. I know it's difficult to get it done, but I appreciate everything you guys have done for our kids and for our staff. Thank you, school board, for everything you do and continue to do for us. Dr. Detloff and administration, Mr. Ramirez, Lakeview administration, our Lakeview community, man, they're just very supportive and appreciate all their support they've given us during these times. And it's just, it's awesome to have a maintenance staff, maintenance and staff to help us and continue to do what we do. Appreciate them. All the teachers here and support staff here at Lakeview. Mr. Coach Chant, Coach Baker, thank you. Julie, Jessica, Maria Irma, thank you all you guys for everything that helped you help us throughout the season. But I'd like to thank our Booster Club for all the support. They continue to give all of our programs, not just football. Team Mom, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for everything you've done for our kids throughout the season. I know our season was kind of hectic. We changed schedules a few times. So that was pretty interesting. A big thanks to our trainers. Troy Wilde and Kelsey Vanderburg. And through these trying times, they've been very patient and very helpful getting us through all these certain situations. They're student trainers. I mean, without hesitation, they went out there and they provided help and water and whatever we needed, they were there without question. Elijah Fernandez, Amos Garcia, Naomi Garcia, Yolanda Ramirez, Madison Salas. Thank you, guys, for everything. And our manager, Diego Aguilera. Our film crew, I'm kind of, maybe, they're probably going to see this in the slide, but... Our film crew, Brenda Álvarez, Elijah Capocchina, Munce de la Torre, Clarissa Fernandez, Alize Gonzalez, Ally López, Estrella Morales, our film crew, giving us a good film to watch on the weekends and to prepare for the games. I'd like to recognize, I know I've got a lot of kids, oh, my computer wants to update, sorry. Sorry. I'd like to thank, I mean, with all of our kids, I'm going to kind of name them all, so it's going to be quite a bit. Jacob Chapa, Austin Bandy, Fernando Aguirre, Brendan Cruz, Taven White, Albert Rodriguez, Anthony Mendez, Francisco Campo, Brandon Herrera, Paulo Madero, Brian Garavé, Davashin Manley, Tristan Franklin, Bryce Medley, Antonio Rojas, Jayja Padilla, Jason Anderson, J.D. Salgado, Josh Torres, Kate Henry, Ricky Ramirez, Manny Rojas, Wyatt Henry, Jorge López, Victor Aguirre, Jaden Fuentes, Aiden Robinson, Austin Wood, Omar Ponce, Miles Torres, Gio Pablo, Giovanni Loera, Andrew Rivera, Ricardo Sanchez, Alex Alcantar, John Mendez, Eli Estalamantes, Jimmy Chapoy, Adán Infante Short, Ryan Mendez, Adrian Mascorro, John Cepeda, Armando Dominguez, Cody High, John Hayes, Christian Morales, Eric Pies, Willie Rodriguez, Juan Ortiz, Zeke Davila, Antonio Roqueo. All these kids, and then there's some few kids that were not mentioned, but all these kids were here at practice to start at seven. They were here before anybody was here on campus and they were usually the last ones to leave. And so a big praise to them, not just because they were here at practice, but they maintained grades to play in our playoff game versus Clint. So we're proud of their work throughout the year, not only on the field, but in the classroom. And our coaches, our coaches, I guess we can start the slideshow? I think, like I said, thank you once again for administration, school, our community. We are extremely thankful that we're able to play our season. Let's see. Our assistant coaches, I'd like to thank, a special thanks to Daniel Mejia, Derek Allenbar. These guys, I mean, they've put in so many hours throughout the season. I mean, day and night, they've put game plans together and worked with our young coaches, young coaching staff. Our assistant coaches, Landon Als, Eduardo Bueno, Gerald Butts, Jesse Casades, Jonathan Gonzalez, Jace Hall, Miguel Hernández, Sergio Plata, Josué Reyes. There's a few guys that were not on there. Harold Soa, Matthew Redd, Matthew Reddell, and Remington Garcia, those guys are from the Lincoln Middle School and they do a good job preparing our kids, moving them up to Lakeview, and we appreciate all their hard work. And that sound was one of the greatest sounds I've heard to begin the school year. We're so excited to be at the first game here at Lakeview Stadium, I mean, San Joel Stadium. But that, we just wanted to put that there, just, it was exciting to know that there was a season and we wanted to put that in there. As I mentioned before, thank you to all our trainers, head coach, film crew, and our student trainers and our manager. Guys, we wanted to show some game pictures. I'm sorry. What are the next one? There we go. And there's some, our kids, we're proud of our kids. Some of our kids that excelled throughout the season and they received some individual accolades. The season obviously didn't, we didn't go the wild plan it. But we still competed well and was real proud of our kids on the field. And day in and day, game in, game out, they showed up to play and there was a never quit attitude. And they could have very easily given up and they never did. And it was good to see, and it was good to see that our kids were recognized at our meetings, at our district meeting. We nominate our kids, but, you know, the other coaches vote for them. Fernando Aguirre, he received an academic all-state, academic all-state selection, honorable mention. He's also been accepted to Angelo State and Texas Tech University. Jason Anderson's district, all-district selection for honorable mention wide receiver. Austin Bandy, he's a first-team all-district wide receiver, honorable mention secondary. Jimmy Chapoy, honorable mention offensive line. Jacob Chapa, honorable mention secondary. Zeke Davila, honorable mention outside linebacker, academic all-state. Honorable mention as well, accepted to Texas A&amp;M University. Tristan Franklin, honorable mention wide receiver. Brandon Herrera, he's all-district second-team secondary, honorable mention wide receiver. He also was a select honorable mention academic all-state and is accepted to Angelo State and Texas Tech. Cody High, all-district first-team offensive lineman. Adrian Mascorro, he's honorable mention defensive line, all-district defensive line and academic honorable mention all-state, accepted to Texas Tech University. Anthony Mendez, all-district Ironman utility player. Were you able to use this young man almost everywhere in every position on the field? and without hesitation, he competed and it was very coachable. He's been accepted to Texas State Technical College in Waco. John Mendez, second-team all-district linebacker, accepted to here at Harvard College. Ryan Mendez, second-team offensive line, accepted to Texas State Technical College in Waco. Francisco Campo, second-team all-district all-state selection, accepted to the University of Texas and Texas Tech. Ricky Ramirez, all-district honorable mention running back. Albert Rodriguez, honorable mention first-team quarterback and, I mean, all-district, first-team quarterback, all-district first-team punter. J.D. Salgado, honorable mention all-district linebacker. Chet Short, honorable mention offensive line. Josh Torres, all-district first-team running back. And there's a couple of pictures of our team. As you can see, we'd like to thank the coaches, the administration involved in getting us new turf and it was beautiful, beautiful stadium. I'd like to leave with this, I'd like to say that all of us have been committed, we're committed to accomplishing our task, even under these challenging circumstances. We wonder, and it was good to see that we, our coaching staff and trainers, we wanted our students to feel as normal as possible. It has been a challenging but fulfilling to see our student athletes adapt to everyday changes that have been placed upon us. The students and coaches can-do attitude during these unique times has been nothing short but inspiring, and I think that comes with our leadership that we have in this ISD. We appreciate your dedication throughout the season. Thank you. Go Chiefs.
Thank you, Coach. Mr. Lehman, that concludes this evening's recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez, and thanks to our IT team and everyone that worked on that. I appreciate that. And all the coaches did a great job of introducing our kids. I know it takes a little while and I appreciate everyone's patience in the audience as well. You know, we used to recognize the kids, but we didn't get as good of an opportunity to really meet them. They'd come up and shake our hands, but we find out a little bit more about them this way and I really like this, so we appreciate all the hard work on that. We do have one other recognition. And we're going to recognize Sutton Link of West Texas. Ms. Wood's going to do that for us.
First, I just want to say congratulations to all of those student athletes and coaches and even the unsung heroes. I think one of the coaches mentioned the maintenance crew and the custodial staff that's really helped make their seasons possible this year, so I just want to commend them all again as well. That's incredible kiddos we have and support staff. So, moving on to this, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, tonight is my great pleasure to honor a very generous donation from Sutton Link Communication. Sutton Link West Texas donated 40 iPads to San Angelo ISD for use inside our classrooms. This donation will help San Angelo ISD to provide vital equitable access to devices and thereby empower our students. These iPads are already being put to great use as part of our STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math labs on our campuses. This truly helps San Angelo ISD to prepare future-ready graduates for success. We had planned to have Ms. Monica Kinser of Sutton Link with us here tonight to accept the recognition, but she was unable to make it, so I've asked Sharlyn Doyle to accept on their behalf, our Director of Technology. So, if you will please join me in thanking Sutton Link. Yeah, sorry, I want to get my mask on. Want to say thank you on behalf of our administrators, our district, and most importantly, on behalf of our students that are putting these to great use. Thank you. Thank you, Sharlyn.
Okay, that concludes our recognitions. Let's try to get through our reports and our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes? That's item five on our agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Denon, a second from Dr. Kingman, to approve the minutes of our finance and pre-agenda board workshop on November 9, 2020, and the November 16, 2020 regular board meeting. Do we have any questions or comments concerning our minutes? Do we have any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is, I referred to in my opening comments for items, anyone wishing to speak to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening. I don't have anybody that signed up to do that. I've got some that signed up to speak on our agenda item. It's on the renaming of Lee Middle School, that is later on our agenda, but if anyone would like to speak to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening, now would be a great time to come forward. I see no one wishing to do so, so we'll move on to our reports. Our student enrollment report from the 14th Monday of school, November 30, 2020. We are, we have about 14,000 students currently attending San Angelo Independent School District, and we appreciate the confidence of the parents of our community and we thank them for making sure that their kids are going to school and participating in every activity possible in our district. The next item is our second six weeks average daily attendance report. We talked about this at our pre-agenda board workshop, where normally we have about a 95% attendance rate, we're about 92% attendance rate, so we're down about three percentage points. Dr. Detloff, I think, has mentioned this a couple of times, that's what's going on statewide. I think about 4% of the students statewide have not returned to school. And in our case, we're in about the 3% range, so we are still constantly looking for those students, but that's our second six weeks average daily attendance report. It's exciting to me that, for me, that a lot of our students at the younger ages have come back. The ones that we seem to have the most trouble with are those that are in high school, so some of them might have gone and got jobs to help their family or, you know, other things that we don't know about. And we also have 25% of our district that moves on an annual basis, 25% of our kids, so because we didn't have the opportunity to be with our kids in the spring, we kind of lost contact with some of them and we're still working to try to gain, to try to find those and get those kids back in school. But that's our six weeks annual, excuse me, our average daily attendance report. Our next item is an update on academic progress and Dr. Ritter's got a presentation for us this evening. After this, we'll take a short break and then we'll go on with our schedule. Hi, Amy.
Thank you. Hi, Amy, how are you? Ms. El Flint joining us there. Hello, and Dr. Detloff, Mr. Lehman, and members of the board. And so, this evening, a little thrown off because they're, I think it's going to, so tonight, we're going to be sharing with you the highlights from something that we talked about last week and brought forward by our San Angelo Reads, and the initiative that we launched this past week, had a very successful launch with that, and so Whitney Woods, our Executive Director of Communications, is going to be joining me here, and we're going to be highlighting some of the great things from that day and things that we have planned moving forward, as well as some highlights about just literacy and how just our focus on literacy has made such a difference in our district and across our community. So, I'll let Whitney come up and she can, the first one's mine. Yes, okay, sorry about that. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on, so I'm going to have to. So, as we talked about last week, in order to position San Angelo ISD as a leader in literacy and literacy innovation through a community-wide literacy initiative to promote and encourage reading and the future-ready learner profile attributes of collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking among our SA ISD students in the San Angelo community, we've launched our San Angelo Reads initiative, which is a great focus on literacy across our entire community that we launched last week, but this is an ongoing initiative to continue the focus of literacy across San Angelo. We know that the importance of this is due to the impact of literacy and the considerations, our why behind, why this is important. We know that third grade is a critical milestone in a child's education and that research indicates that if a student is reading below third-grade levels, it is really difficult for them to ever catch up. They only have a 1 in 8 chance of ever catching up and are four times more likely to drop out of school. We know that their success in reading is highly correlated to future academic challenges as well as dropout, incarceration, and poverty rates. So, our focus on literacy and our goal that we have students reading on level by third grade has been something that our district is focused on, has been focused on, with a great push for literacy instruction and support in our district. We know that some of this has resulted in some great, some great gains in reading and literacy levels in our district. We know that our percentage of elementary students showing increases in their individual reading level just this school year from August through October, 92% of our kiddos are showing, that's actually even increasing as we go, and through December, we see a 96% increase. This is a slide that we had from last week, and I can tell you that even looking at data today, we are constantly reviewing our data and determining what, you know, how we're growing in this area, and this is based on iStation data. We will also be presenting, you know, later through the year as we continue to get more on their reading levels. It's been quite a challenge this year with COVID, obviously, in a pandemic when we left for spring break and didn't come back and we had students out of school for months. I know this, that when we got our kiddos back and we had kids in, back in person, our teachers really noticed that they had missed out on reading instruction and we have done so much to try to focus on that reading, even with our virtual students, working on lessons to help our students to catch up with some of the gaps that they've experienced from being out of school for months. And we're starting to really see increases in their reading and we're seeing that, you know, when students learn how to read, they don't forget, and they're still continuing to grow and working on that reading every single day. Our impact of literacy and the considerations of our why. Under-resourced children hear 30, goodness, 30 million fewer words by age three than their more affluent peers, known as the 30-million-word gap. And so, children and teenagers who read for pleasure on a daily or weekly basis score better on reading and writing tests than their infrequent or non-readers. So, what we're trying to do with our initiative is to allow our kids to see us as readers, to see us in the community as readers, their teachers, but not just their teachers, for this to go beyond to community leaders, to their parents, to their family members, and to be excited about reading. Sometimes I think we forget the excitement that reading can really bring to us, and so we're going to be doing a lot of things to encourage reading across our community and to highlight this and model it for our students. Something else that we have seen in our data is with our middle schools and just focusing on reading and a truly, truly such a strong push for literacy instruction in our elementaries. The students that are now entering into our middle schools are stronger readers than we've, than we have ever seen in our district, and that's encouraging and exciting for us, but now we're starting to see it in our data. So, looking at our middle schools, we see that all of our middle schools made a 7% to 10% gain in reading progress from their 2019 STAR and MAP assessments to the fall 2020 MAP assessment, which is our measure of academic progress. And this is really the closest assessment that we can have, it's by NWEA, that gives us the most valid data on how our students really are doing. And to see an increase, even with the pandemic, with our middle school students, is extremely encouraging. We know that what that means, our partnership with Scholastic, they say, well, you know what? When you teach them how to read, they're not, they don't forget how to read, but we're teaching them to read deeply for comprehension and understanding, and it's sticking with them and they're moving it forward. So, our kids are really becoming strong readers and that's very important for their future success, we know that. And I'm going to read just a little bit more about the importance of reading for us to all remember before Whitney comes up and shares with us the highlights from our San Angelo Reads Day. So, the initiative, this initiative of San Angelo Reads will provide us with the opportunity to encourage, promote, and model the importance of reading for the children of San Angelo. We know that research tells us that reading allowed to children is the single most important activity to help build future reading success. Reading with and to children leads to significant vocabulary development and comprehension skills. As we help children develop reading skills, we are helping them grow in inferential thinking and connection to characters. Modeling reading and enjoying books with children fosters a sense of purpose for reading and encourages young readers to understand the importance of strong literacy skills. It is powerful when developing readers see and hear adult readers, share a love for reading and how reading connects to successful traits for future-ready skills. Cultivating a strong culture of reading across our community will result in more confident, empowered, and accomplished readers across all age groups. We look forward to launching a strong literacy initiative and coming together as a community to grow readers through San Angelo Reads.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter, for again reviewing the why that we're really doing this literacy initiative, San Angelo Reads, and how we not only want to inspire our students, but also have it carry out of the classroom and into the home environment, into the community, because it's so important to model that reading so that they really embrace it and can continue on that path to success. So, previously, board, I went through a marketing plan that we had to really support this initiative so that we again can inspire that on our campuses and the passion in that way, but also carry it out into our community because it's so instrumental to have that in our communities as well. So, but today, instead of giving you the marketing plan that we overviewed that we did last time, I'm just going to give you kind of some highlights of our launch and the really kickoff support that we had for San Angelo Reads Day last Wednesday on December 9th, and just kind of give you a little bit of taste of that. I hope you were able to follow along last week, we had a great time and we had some great support, but I'll run through it now. So, really, to kick off the initiative, we celebrated with the citywide proclaimed day that was San Angelo Reads Day. We partnered with the city where we had an official proclamation, and so we really just wanted to carry that out to our campuses, carry it out to our community, and I'll show you some of the ways that we did that. So, we decided, you know, one great tool we have, of course, is our social media. We know a lot of our families are connected that way, as well as our students and our educators and our San Angelo ISD team. So, we thought, you know, we're not just going to have one or two posts about it, we're going to just do something every hour and we're going to really highlight ways that they can get involved, we're going to highlight things that are going on at our campuses. So, we had hourly posts from 8:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., and I want to say that Molly Johnson and Jack Wilcox really helped us get creative with this and have some fun with it, so they were instrumental in creating success in this way. And this was to encourage community-wide engagement, and we had the SA ISD Reads hashtag. I encourage you to go search that on Facebook, you'll see some of the community members that we had supporting that, all sorts of groups, and it was really a community-wide effort, but you also see some of our educators that were involved in it too, so that was fun. Some highlights that you'll see is that our San Angelo A to Z video that we're going to play at the end of my part of this presentation. We have over 30,000 in reach on that, which is incredible, that's about 5.2% higher than what we've had in the past in our good-performing posts, so that's really exciting. And then our campuses tuned in, so we had, Dr. Detloff did a live read-along at Lamar Elementary, and we saw some of our campuses and our teachers watching along with their students, so that was exciting. It was a fun way for them to really get engaged and be involved, and we had a lot of positive comments. So, that was fun to see our community members, our educators, everybody coming around to inspire literacy. And then, of course, we had our online component. One of the great things we have here is a wonderful website, so we created a landing page, sais.org/reed, and that is a resource landing page, so we are putting things out there for families to use when they're at home. So, you know, during this holiday break and beyond that, this summer, and just, you know, when they go home, and not only as resources that they can use, like video read-alongs, thanks to our partnership with Scholastic, but also tips. We've really worked for, you know, even with our bilingual program and that sort of thing to really knock this out of the park. We have a partnership with Tom Green County Library where they are helping to get library cards in hand, so. So, and you can find out more about that on the site. So it's been a great tool. And then we also, of course, have one of our website carousels, so it's easy to find on our website. And then we, of course, always are going to try to leverage our traditional media. We started bright and early. Thank you, Dr. Ritter, for getting up here early. We started at 6:30 AM and just got a lot of excitement out around that. And then, of course, we also had 4:00 and 5:00 to get those drive times. And then we had a live read-along at one of our campuses over at Bradford and we had some media come out and join us for that. So it was just a lot of fun and getting a lot of coverage and trying to get as much information out there to our families and our community about the importance of this initiative and to really get their support around it. We also had traditional print. I want to say thank you to San Angelo Standard Times, who is a good partner in that way, was really helping us with this literacy initiative. And we got, of course, in our San Angelo Family Mag, we liked getting there. And then we had some support from some of our local billboard companies. We have Lamar advertising and Southwest that each helped us with having some billboards in town to really celebrate on the day of. So that was donated. We really appreciate that support. And of course, our campuses, marquees and even some local businesses, you'll see some of the banks had signs that supported it. Whataburger said, "We support San Angelo Reads" on their sign. So really the more, just getting it blanketed throughout our community. And then our campuses just blew it out of the park. They did a wonderful job. There were exciting things going on from Santa Rita having a book vending machine as an incentive for these kiddos and getting really innovative with it, to Lamar doing read-alongs. I mean, our campuses were working hard to make it fun and really compelling to our kiddos. And then we had a lot of community support and we're going to continue to work on this. But that's an exciting thing and it's one way that we can really take it from the classroom out into the community. I want to say special thanks. You'll see up there that we had, of course, San Angelo Area Foundation that was huge on getting those books in kids' hands for the third graders, but we also had, Schools Foundation was very involved. We had, thank you to support from Fast Signs, Gandy Inc., Whataburger, Scholastic, HEB, Tom Green County Library. Again, those two billboard companies, Southwest and Lamar, United Way and Card My Yard. So it was great to see that community support come around it and we're looking to do more of that as we go on. And we also had, you know, community groups, like I said, Schools Foundation, NAACP, Junior League of San Angelo, Girl Scouts, Ballet San Angelo, and that's just the tip of it. So it was really exciting to see people come together. And that's great too, because you get people that are modeling that and you see leaders in our community doing it. So that's inspiring to our kiddos and to our families. And again, this is going to be an ongoing initiative. That was the kickoff. We wanted to do a big splash to get people really excited, but it's going to continue. So one thing that we have coming up that we're excited that we're working on is a holiday read-along. So again, this is in partnership with Scholastic. We appreciate them helping us get these right so that we can actually share these read-alongs on our social media and on that resource page that I mentioned on our website. But so we are going to do, I believe it's daily, we're working on getting them all filmed and recorded right now. They'll feature community members, including Representative Drew Darby, Mayor Brenda Gunter, some of our doctors, thank you, Dr. Kingman's coming in, and SAPD. So again, these are great examples of community leaders showing the importance of literacy, including in what they do. And again, that's in partnership with Scholastic. So that's coming soon. Be watching our social media and webpage for that. And then we've got some other things that are in the works, including, you know, January, we're setting literacy goal setting on the campuses and identifying their motivators for each of the kiddos. And then we're looking at doing a first Wednesday of every month being campus read days, not quite to the scale of our citywide day that we do, that we're going to continue to do next year too, but just every month to refocus on that. And then HEB is working with us to do another book giveaway. We're thinking maybe February for that one, we're not sure yet of the nuff, and that's probably going to focus on our first graders since our third graders got the initial focus. And United Way, we're looking at doing a program called United We Read with them in a partnership probably about May for our second graders. So we're really excited. Again, this isn't the end. We want to keep it going, keep it moving forward, but we're so proud of the work that we did for that initial launch to get people excited about it. So again, I want to say some thank yous. Our campus leaders that blew it out of the park, from our principals to our instructional coaches, to the leadership here for all supporting it. And again, communications team, I can't say enough good things about Molly Johnson, Jack Wilcox and of course Barbara Carter and Abba Benuelos for helping us out there too. And the curriculum instruction team, of course, great ideas and really bringing this to us to put it out there. And again, those community partners I mentioned earlier, that really coming all together helped to make it a success, but we're very proud of it and we're looking forward to continuing it to really help our kiddos and promote literacy and help them be successful. And now we're going to share the San Angelo A to Z video, which is one of the big pieces we're really proud of. And you'll see it features one of, a third grader from each of our campuses. So we really wanted to just get the excitement around reading and we're really proud of this great video about the book.
San Angelo, today we are going to celebrate literacy by reading a great book about one of our favorite things, this spectacular city, San Angelo. This book, San Angelo A to Z by Linda Thorson-Bonn, is a fun way to learn fascinating tidbits and facts about our hometown. Join us in this read-along featuring some of our SAISD students and local friends. Let's get started.
A is for art. In San Angelo, you can look at all kinds of art. B is for bison, the big woolly animals that have been in San Angelo since the beginning of time.
C is for the Concho River, where San Angelo began.
D is for donkey. There are almost 1,000 donkeys at the Peaceful Valley Donkey Rescue.
E is for education, which is very important in San Angelo.
F is for Fort Concho, the old fortier army post that is now a museum.
G is for Goodfellows Air Force Base. People at Goodfellows practice military skills that'll help protect America.
H is for heritage park. A small park that shows how important renting is to San Angelo.
I is for the International Water Lily Collection. There are seven ponds with over 450 kinds of lilies.
J stands for the Humano Indian Tribe. The Humano Indians arrived in West Texas before the Europeans found West Texas.
K is for Cat's Kingdom. A park in downtown San Angelo that was designed by children.
L is for libraries. San Angelo has four libraries where you can read.
M is for monarch butterfly. Thousands of monarchs visit San Angelo as they fly south for winter.
N is for the Nature Center. This is a safe place for animals that can't live in the wild in West Texas.
O is for Oscar Rafini, San Angelo's first architect.
P is for Performing Arts Center, also known as PAC, where you can watch dance, theater and music shows.
Q is for quilts. These special covers do more than just keep you warm.
R is for rodeo.
S is for sheep. They're painted sheep like this all over San Angelo.
T is for train. The train coming through San Angelo was very important in our early days.
U is for uniform, a type of clothing worn by members of a team or group.
V is for vistas, which are views that let you see a long, long way.
W is for wings. Planes, helicopters, drones, and sometimes even people fly over San Angelo.
X marks the spot. The treasure of San Angelo is the Concho Pearl.
Y is for yellow fields and flowers that cover San Angelo with a glow-like sunshine.
Z, or Zeta en español, is for los zapatos, which means shoes in English.
We hope you enjoyed this tour of San Angelo from A to Z.
So that concludes our presentation and wrap up and just hope you enjoyed our review of the San Angelo Reads Initiative Day. And all of you out there, be ready to hear about more updates and things that we're going to do and call on you for your community support in supporting literacy across San Angelo and our community. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Dr. Ritter. Any questions for about the presentation? I'm looking forward to us moving forward with it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And as I promised, I'm, we're going to take a short break, like five minutes short. So it's 7:32. Let's try to get back by 7:37 and we'll finish with the rest of our board agenda. Meeting, appreciate everyone, again, their patience. And I think it was mentioned at least a couple of times, but during the last report, I really appreciate our IT team and all the folks that are working hard. I know Jack did a lot of work on our A to Z video, but we appreciate all the work of that entire team. We'll move forward to item A on our agenda, which is our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve items A through D?
Second.
We have a quiet motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our consent items. Item A is consider approval of our quarterly investment report ending November 30th of 2020. Item B is to ratify the administration's action and sale of properties. These are properties that we sell in conjunction with the county and the city that are delinquent in tax that have been purchased and we get those properties back on the tax roll. Item C is consider cooperative purchasing organizations that we work with statewide, really. Mr. Henry presented that to us last week at our pre-agenda board workshop. And item D is to consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel. And I think Dr. Gomez left a addendum to that at our place here this evening. So those are items A through D. And as I mentioned in my earlier comments, all these items have been discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop, which was last Monday. Any questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item nine, consider bills, accounts and financial statements for the month of November of 2020.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for Mr. Dindal and a second for Mr. Hernandez to approve our bills, accounts and financial statements for November of 2020. Do we have any board comments or questions?
Mr. Lehman, just to note to the public that all of these reports and statements were reviewed previously in our pre-agenda meeting last week. And also, all those reports can be found online, saisd.org.
Thanks, Bill. Any other board comments or questions? Any public comment concerning item nine on our agenda? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Amy's not coming through, but she can at least wave her hand and vote that way, maybe? Sorry.
Sorry, my phone wouldn't, or my computer wouldn't unmute.
Yeah, that's good. So Amy's ayeing as well. So that, we will move forward to item 10, which is considered the proposed amendment to the district's official budget to our general fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval. Second.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. We have a motion for Mr. Dindal and a second from Dr. Kingman to approve our proposed amendment to the district's official budget. This doesn't change our revenues or our expenditures in any way. It's just moving money from one function to another within our budget codes. Any questions or comments concerning our budget from any other board team member? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 11, consider selection of, for the renaming of Lee Middle School. And Dr. Detloff's got a couple of comments and then I'm going to make a couple. And, no, I tell you what we're going to do, Dr. Detloff's going to make comments. I've got a couple of people signed up to speak. We'll let those speak and any others that would like to, that didn't have the chance to sign up. And then our board, even though we've been working on this for four months, we haven't had an opportunity as a board team to speak publicly. And so we'll, each one of us will take the opportunity to maybe list the names that are, that we would like or just have an overall discussion about that. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Detloff first.
Mr. Lehman, members of the board, good evening. And Ms. Michelle Flint, I'm not sure if you're behind me or beside me, but we're glad you're with us. Thank you for that. At our regular board meeting on October 19th, action was taken to retire the name of Robert E. Lee Middle School after an extensive process to gather community input and thoroughly research the topic. Based on the action taken in October, our board team was provided over 120 names at our November board meetings. These names were submitted and nominated by our public as potential names to replace the name of Lee Middle School. The list includes geographical locations, regional flora and fauna, historical sites and figures, local heroes, community leaders, elected officials and individuals that helped create the fabric of San Angelo as we know it today. Over the course of the last month, our board team has had the opportunity to review the formalized list of over 120 potential names and will again discuss options this evening before an official motion is made to select a new name. I want to publicly thank our board of trustees for initiating an extended and transparent process, almost six months, Mr. Lehman, since we received our first submission back in June, and to engage our community in this challenging yet important endeavor. As mentioned previously, a process to choose a new mascot will take place on the campus in early January, heavily involve students and be directed by the middle school principal, Ms. Amy LaMester, who's with us this evening. Ms. LaMester and her students will provide two to three names for our leadership team to evaluate, and if approved, will go back to the campus level for finalization. Again, this process will take place in January at the campus level. We are also in contact with the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts and its director, Howard Taylor, to help design a space in the Lee Middle School library that will properly chronicle the history of the naming and renaming of Lee Middle School. Part of this display will be also listing the, or providing the detailed mosaic that was in front of Lee Middle School, as well as artifacts and honors from Lee Middle School and its history. Mr. Lehman, I now turn it back to you and our board of trustees for any discussion and a potential motion.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff, for that recap. I have two folks that signed up to speak, so I'll call on them first and remind them, as I mentioned earlier, if you would limit your comments to five minutes, it would be greatly appreciated by our board team. And I'll, Ms. Hopkins will kind of keep time for us and I'll try not to be rude if you go over that, but I will. After about 30 or 40 seconds, I'll remind everyone that, or whoever's speaking, that they've spoken long enough. And so first, we have Mr. Hatler, Jim Hatler. Thank you for being here, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. Got my little prepared remarks here. All right, five minutes. Political correctness and cancel culture, which are not, not only the two most craven and dishonest tools in the political toolbox, but I think they're cancer in modern culture. They subjugate everyone's courage to political expediency and thrive on division. These are the weapons used by a group, I believe led by Jesse Ramone and his group, to badger the school board into lockstep obedience. After all, prior to the petition and the stink that was raised, how many of you on the school board, this is a legitimate question, had been laying awake at night worried and conflicted about the name Robert E. Lee Middle School for the petition? Anybody experience that? All right. From what I understand, the names have been All right. From what I understand, the names have been whittled down to two candidates. Major Troy Lee Gilbert and Mary Frances Owens. What I know about, and what I've read about Major Gilbert, is that he actually went to school here. He attended ASU. He's a war hero, bravely dying in service to save his brothers in arms. Commendable man. Mary Frances Owens, not from here, La Mesa. Born and raised in La Mesa. While she may have been probably a fine woman from all indications, my thoughts are, let's allow La Mesa to honor her by naming a school after her. After all, let's not steal their thunder if they wish to do that. The change the name group really already won the first round. Their initial complaint was simply against something. It was against the name Robert E. Lee. It was never a complaint for something. Please consider confirming the name of Major Troy Lee Gilbert as an extremely reasonable compromise between the position of Jesse's group and that of virtually everyone else. Truly, they already won the first round and have been awarded exactly what they asked for. Now they want authority to also choose the new name. Another bite at the apple. You don't owe them anything. You're paid them full. Let's be reasonable and let's be fair and balance this issue of contention in the community. Major Gilbert is an honorable name for the new school, and I think a rare win-win. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, Mr. Hatler, and appreciate you being here. Next, I have Ms. Spears, Shirley Spears. Thank you for being here, Ms. Spears.
Thank you. Good evening. I have a letter that I am reading from the magistrate courts of Burke County, Burke County Judicial Center in Waynesboro, Georgia. It is from a student of Ms. Owens, as she started her career here in the San Angelo area, even though she is originally from La Mesa. Her 60-plus years of education were spent here in San Angelo. Honorable, honorable board members, I am writing to you to request that the Tom Green County School, formerly known as Lee Junior High School, be renamed to honor Mary Frances Butler Owens. I have requested that my letter be read aloud in this forum. I will be succinct. You can and you must. It has been more than 30 years since I first met Mrs. Owens. Even so, I can still hear the very distinct voice saying those words to encourage me, and at the same time, she was directing me to dream and to aggressively pursue my goals. I think I was 17 years old when Mrs. Owens, my mom and I, were discussing my future. Mrs. Owens asked me if I could be anything, what would I do? I said, be a judge. She said, write it down. We got it on the, on my senior page in my high school yearbook. I'm a judge now. I have the yearbook in my office. I sometimes share my story with struggling youth. I tell them that they can dream big and be successful, and I explain to them they must keep fighting, must help others, like Mrs. Owens helped me. Mrs. Owens did not just impart words of encouragement. She was present. She found the opportunities for us to take the rest, the next steps in achieving our goals, and she was the go-to person for students and parents. Her ability to motivate and organize others has had a lasting effect, not just on our community, but the world. When I worked as a young United States Air Force Personnel Commander and Department of State-sponsored Cultural Diplomacy Project Manager, I utilized her words and made model to encourage young airmen and foreign students. As a United States Air Force veteran, I am often told, thank you for your service. I usually reply by asking the person to tell me what they do, and usually thank them for their contributions to our community, because we often miss recognizing the great service and sacrifices of our non-military community members. Under this cloud of COVID-19, it has been clearly demonstrated to us that education are frontline educators or frontline workers. And now is the time to not only recognize educators, but to honor them with the most high honor, namely, naming the institutions and facilities after those who have given a lifetime of service within those, within those walls to educate and enrich us to that we can be of service to others. In this case, it is Mrs. Owens. She has demonstrated a lifetime of commitment and service. It is time to thank her for her service with the highest of honor. Sincerely, Judge Mamie Parks, former student and resident of San Angelo, Texas, Burke County Judicial Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spears, for reading that to us. That's the only folks I had sign up. Is there others in the audience that would like to come forward? If you do, would you be sure and tell us your name? And when you get to the microphone and do as the first two speakers did, and limit your comments to five minutes, that'd be awesome.
Good evening. My name is Ginger Moore. I was a friend of the families when they were stationed at Goodfellow Air Force Base. Troy was in junior high at the time, and his dad was a master sergeant, and he was superintendent of our FSS squadron, that's what it is called now. Then it was MWR. He, he and his family dedicated their lives to the military, and I worked with military children for 28 years. I'm telling you that this is a good example for these children that come here to San Angelo from other places around the world and don't have a foothold yet in San Angelo. Now, we did match them up with another child about their same age that had already been in San Angelo for a while. But that would be a nice hero thing for these young people to look up to. He was a hero. His body was missing for 10 years, and they finally brought back his body and buried it at Arlington Cemetery. He was a true hero. Major Troy Gilbert and his parents, Kay and Ron Gilbert, sacrificed their lives as a Golden Star family, as a Gold Star family. And I believe that that would be a good value system for our young people to look up to as a hero. He was a pilot. He went to Angelo State. He was in our school district, and he was military. And the military child is sometimes overlooked, and they have a hard time in a new environment. So this would give them kind of a foothold if they attended this school. And I just want to say that I think he would be a great example for our students. And they could have a lot of good, different ideas from this as well to look at for their school symbols. And it would be a great triumph, I think, for Goodfellow, because Goodfellow has been such an integral part of this community for so many years, that somebody from Goodfellow be nominated for the school name. He also has a bridge named after him. He has several buildings named after him. So I think they've already looked thoroughly into his background. So he might make a good example for our young people. And that's, I would highly recommend that name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We appreciate your comments, and we appreciate you being here. Others? Anyone else wishing to make any comments? Okay, I guess we're gonna get to see a little representative republic in action here. I'll start out. I think Mr. Parker asked if I would be willing to list any comments that I have when he and I visited briefly about this last week. And I thought I'd just make some suggestions and maybe give a reason as to why. The first one that, that I like is Liberty. I think it speaks for all of our children and has an opportunity for us to celebrate something that I think we should all celebrate. So, I like Liberty. I've always liked Lone Star. I guess I've liked Lone Star primarily because it represents our great state and gives us an opportunity to, to recognize that we're all members of the Lone Star State regardless of what type of socioeconomic background we have, and regardless of what ethnicity we might have. We're all members of the Lone Star State. And then my third one, and probably my favorite one, and it's become my favorite because of, I like Veterans Memorial Middle School. I like it because it, it does exactly what it says. It recognizes veterans, and, and we, we should always be willing to do that. So not only would we be recognizing, as Ms. Moore mentioned, those that are in, serving at Goodfellow currently, but it also recognizes all of those who've served our country so gallantly and, and so heroically in the past. So, those are my three, and I could name four or five others that are more than deserving, specific individuals. But I kinda like those three. So I'll mention that. Amy, when you get ready to chime in, we'll let you chime in. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to whoever else wants to, to take, take second, be second to speak.
Mr. Lehman, this is really the first time we've discussed it as a board, as far as names are concerned. And so, I too like the name Lone Star and Liberty. Both are, are high on the list. And then the other two that I was fond of is Concho Middle School and Three Rivers Middle School. Well, all of the people that are mentioned of either national, regional, or local significance, they're all commendable, and they are all great representatives of their respective position in this community and, and the memories that they hold. But I still lean toward the other four names that I mentioned.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. Any other comments from anyone? Mr. Parker?
I spoke so long the last time. I'm trying to be quiet. Everybody else have a say first. Amy, you wanna speak?
Go for it, Amy, if you're ready. Even if you're not ready, go for it.
I'm ready. Okay. So first, I, I would really like to just take a chance, take an opportunity to thank all the people that came and spoke on behalf of Troy Gilbert's family and Ms. Owens' family, or Ms. Owens. I really, I've really enjoyed learning about everything that they've done for our communities. I knew about both of them in, in the past, but getting to hear all the details has really just been, just an honor to hear all that they've done for us as a community. So, I, I do know that as a board, we've kind of talked about, about veering away from naming the school after a person. So, with that, I would like to consider maybe thinking about the name Liberty, or, I'm sorry, Legacy Middle School, because that way it's about everybody who's come before them and left their legacy, and we can encourage the students to start their legacy at their, at their middle school. So, and then my second one would be Concho Middle School, just because, you know, that's who we are. The Concho River is what brought the Tumano Indians to our, to our, you know, community back when they were here. So, the Concho, I think, has a huge part of our history as well. So those are my two names that I'll add. And I'm not gonna add more, because I don't want to add to the confusion.
Thanks, Amy. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
By the way, Amy's not with us, because she's on protocol, she's on COVID quarantine, so that's why she's not here with us this evening.
I'm not sick. It's my family. I'm the healthy one.
Yeah, she's, yeah. So she's quarantining currently. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was gonna...
Gerard, go for it.
When all this, like, like Amy said earlier, a big thank you to all of you that participated in all of this. This is, it's been a process. It's, it's one that, that we took, took on. And I'd like to thank everyone that, that provided all the information that we needed and gave us some wonderful names. The three names that really stood out, that, well, first of all, the names of Albert DeCayena, Mary Frances Owens, Troy Lee Gilbert. Those were the three names that, that really stood out to me. But the one thing that I've really been thinking about this whole past two weeks of all this is, all three of those people, they, they sacrificed their time, their lives, everything they did was for the service of others. They didn't do it to, to get their name on a building. They didn't do it to, to receive all sorts of accolades. Mary Frances Owens taught me from first grade to sixth grade, and taught me a lot. And, and as a matter of fact, before I ran for school board, what, 15 years ago, I went to see her. And one of the things she told me was, was it was great to see one of her students step up and do something for the good of their community. Because that's why I wanted to do it. And that's what she always stressed with us, do things for your community, not for your attention. You know, do things to help others. And, you know, I was flipping through some stuff. I saw an old quote, a quote, this is a very old quote. It was by Confucius. Can you believe that? And it said, "Those who wish to serve the good of others have already secured their own." You know, and, and I read that, and I thought, you know, all, Troy Lee Gilbert, Albert DeCayena, two servicemen killed in action. And I thought of others here from San Angelo that, that were also killed in action. But I thought, you know, I don't want to name, put a name on a building, again. You know, one, because that's not why they did their service. That's why I said, they didn't do their services. They didn't make their sacrifices to have their names placed on a building for accolades or for, for distinguishing. You know, they didn't do that for that. They did it for the love of their country, their community, and others. That's why they did it. And the names that, that popped up were just two simple names. Concho Middle School is one of them that, that I wanted. And the other was just San Angelo Middle School. But that's what I wanted to say on, on this, is, I don't want to put a name on there. And I know, I know that they sacrificed a lot. I know that. And I don't want to take anything away from them. And the work they all did was, was wonderful. But I, I want to go with just the name of something here in San Angelo is what I would like to do. And that's, that's all I have to say on that. And like, again, thank all of you. I'd like to thank all of you for, for all of the input you gave us. So, that's my thought.
Thanks, Gerard. I appreciate you especially thanking everyone, something I failed to do. So, we appreciate everyone being here and going through the whole process with us and, and really doing so in a, in a manner that I think reflects how great our community is. So, Dr. Kingman?
So I've struggled with this a little bit, just because I do think we should be able to name schools after heroes and after people who have done things well. I mean, I do. I think we should be able to live, like, people have lived well, whether it's Mary Frances Butler Owens, Troy Gilbert, Albert DeCayena, like, there's a wonderful group of names that are on here. And not being able to name a school, not being able to give kids heroes is something that bothers me in general. So, I'm, I don't think we should, but saying all that, as, I've said it in my remarks a month and a half ago, too. Like, I didn't want to go through this again, naming it after a person. But I do think naming it, or finding a way in our district to recognize local heroes for our children, we should make that an emphasis somehow. And I'm gonna leave that up to administration to figure out how we do that. But I think it, I do think we need to figure out a way that when a kid from San Angelo looks up, they realize that other San Angelo ISD graduates have done remarkable things with their lives, or other San Angelo ISD educators have made huge impacts on people's lives that have allowed them to succeed. And I think finding a way to draw attention to that and allow for, allow for those people to be set as examples, not necessarily as names on buildings, but set as examples for our students, is something we do need to figure out how to do. That being said, as far as naming the school, I can get behind pretty much everything except Three Rivers Middle School, just because that's a town in South Texas, and I think we should name it after something in San Angelo. But that's just me. But that's just me.
Max, Art?
I am, want to express my appreciation also to all that have taken part of this process, which I think now has been eight months. I think we have given at least 10 open sessions for persons to be able to give their opinions on this, and I applaud our administration for the process that we have taken to be sure to give this issue the importance that it deserves and that importance that our public has, has given by attending the open sessions and all the other sessions that we had online or virtual or in other locations. Someone told me that they read on Facebook that there was some opinions going on that they thought the board, at the time we started this, already knew that we were going to rename this building and already knew the name that we were going to put on that building, and that is totally false. We tried to give it our, I think I speak for all the board, that we tried to give it this our very careful attention to listen to everyone and to take this very seriously, and there was no preconceived ideas. I have, I had no idea when we changed the name, what was going to happen. I certainly don't have any idea what name is going to be given later on tonight. I was on record that I was not in favor of renaming the middle school for a person, and I still feel that way, although I really want to emphasize that I have the very highest respect for those that have spoken for and for, for Major Gilbert and Mary Butler Owens, and for those that have spoken for him, and the family members and the friends, though both are exceptional, extraordinary persons. There's been other persons that have sent me names and have put it on the list of others that are exceptional, extraordinary persons, that we are very fortunate in St. Angelo to have such persons. I agree with Dr. Kingman that I think we need to find buildings perhaps around on some of our campuses, as we did for Eva Communes Tucker and Elmer Kelton, to find buildings that we can put Ms. Owen's name on and Major Gilbert's name on, maybe, this is just me talking, maybe over at Central Freshman Campus, that was Thomas Edison Junior High, where Major Gilbert actually attended school, maybe over at Glenmore, where Ms. Owen's taught school for so long, we can find some building that we can honor them with their name. As to names that have appealed to me, many have been mentioned tonight. One that hasn't, that was mentioned at our last meeting was Invictus. That is a name that I like. That does mean in Latin unconquered or undefeated. Liberty, somebody sent a name to me, the Liberty Eagles. We're not picking the mascot, but that had a ring to me. Legacy, which means inheritance. Legacy All-Stars was the name they gave. I like Legacy. Lone Star, that's the nickname for Texas, Lone Star State, Lone Star Texans. That has a real ring to me as also, is something that any student went to, went to Lone Star Middle School could be proud of. St. Angelo Middle School, somebody nominated St. Angelo Middle School Westerners, said that was one of the first names we had for St. Angelo High School. I think we should have some school in St. Angelo that's just named for the city. We, most cities do, and we don't. And then also a name that Lanning also mentioned, Veterans Memorial, somebody told me Veterans Memorial Patriots, and that I think would be a name that any student could be proud to go to that school. So those are the names that I had. Mr. Lehman?
I'm glad you narrowed it down to such a few number, Max.
There's 120 more I could go through.
Anyone else wishing to make any comments? Well, the next step would be for someone to narrow those, I think there's probably 12, 10 to 12 that were mentioned, down to one motion and see if it reaches, if someone will second that motion, and we would have a vote. So someone wishing to do that, I can do that. Or I'll take a lead if y'all would like for me to do that. Silence is golden. Yeah, yeah. Yep, all we can do is make a motion and see if it meets the standard of a second, and if it doesn't meet the standard of a second, then we'll move forward with another motion.
I'll make a motion to rename the formerly Lee Middle School to St. Angelo Middle School.
Okay, so we have a motion for St. Angelo Middle School. Do we have a second?
I will second so we can have a vote on it.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Parker to name, rename Lee Middle School as St. Angelo Middle School. Any board discussion?
My only question with that is why is one of our middle schools named St. Angelo Middle School versus any of our other, the two others?
Right.
I like, seems like that's kind of like going P.S. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
I would have similar comments. You know, it seems to me like if we would have started out with St. Angelo Middle School, then that makes more sense than, you know, heading there now. But that's my comment. Any other comments from the board? Amy, any comments? I don't want to leave you out.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear, but I did hear St. Angelo Middle School was the nomination and the second. But, and I think I could hear a little bit of what Taylor was saying, where with two other middle schools in St. Angelo, I don't know that St. Angelo Middle School is the best choice. I just think, then, if they were the only, if we were the only middle school in St. Angelo, then I think that would be great, but I think that it needs to have a unique name that's not so generic. And I'm sorry if I repeated or completely contradicted what he said. I couldn't hear.
Sorry, I'll use my mic. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I'm catching every other word.
Any other comments? If not, I'll-
We have to vote before another, I mean, the only other thing I would say is that, looking at just what everyone mentioned, the ones with the most mentions would be the Liberty, Lone Star, or Concho.
Right. Yeah, we got to vote, you know, and we can go through the process again. That's why I said it's, you know, we get to what they say about making laws, it's like making sausage. So this is a little bit like mason, making sausage. So we will, I'll call the vote, all in favor of renaming the school St. Angelo Middle School, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So we have two ayes. Any opposed?
No.
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 So we have five nay's. So that motion fails. Second, does anyone have a second motion?
I'd make a motion that we call it Lone Star. I really like that, Max, Lone Star Texans.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez, for Lone Star.
So I'll second.
So we have a second from Mr. Dindel. Comments?
I'll just ditto what Dr. Kingman said. You know, you got Lone Star, Lee, and Glen, so, and Lincoln, I'm sorry, Lincoln, Lincoln. And said, to me, it's the same thing, just you have two like that. I'd just prefer something locally.
Other comments?
I'll just ask this question, are there things at the middle school now that just have the letter L on it? I mean, things that would not have to be changed if we named something that begins with an L?
Yes, there are, I believe, a few posters in, at Lee Middle School now that maybe say Lee Leeds. And of course, I'm not there, but I can defer to Principal Ms. LaMester. So Amy, as you're approaching the lectern, the question is, are there current items at the Lee Middle School campus that just have a L? So that, my assumption would be, are there any cost-saving initiatives by renaming with a L? Then again, we also want to, you know, if it's minimal cost, you know, we certainly want to look at the, you know, this is a 30, 50, 60-year decision at minimum. So in saying that, the question is, are there posters, artifacts, things with a L that are currently at your school that don't say Lee?
Yes, sir, thank you. Many of our items just say LMS, and our new logo, if you can see, it's on my jacket, our new logo is a collegiate-looking L. So there are a lot of items at our school that would not need to change if our new school name began with an L. Thank you.
Thank you.
That block L, that block L does not say Lee?
The L doesn't say Lee, but at the top here, it says Lee Middle School, and at the bottom it says Lee Leeds. But if our new school name-
But just the symbol?
-began with an L, Jack actually helped us with this logo almost two years ago now, and we would just change the top here, and the bottom we would put our new mascot. Instead of Lee Leeds, we would put our mascot down here and change Lee to whatever our new school name is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? So we have a motion and a second for Lone Star.
I would just mention if we go Lone Star, that we spell it, where sometimes it's spelled just as one word, Lone Star, versus two, so you could keep it just a L, if that makes sense.
If not, I'll call the motion, all in favor of renaming Lee Middle School to Lone Star Middle School, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, so, 1, 2, 3, 4. Art, Max, Taylor, Bill. Okay? Amy, are you voting for or against?
I'd be okay with Lone Star.
So, yeah, so that's, you vote yes or no?
Are you voting yes or no?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I said aye.
Okay, all right, so that's 5-2, so that's, I vote against, and-
I vote against.
Gerard votes against. So 5-2, the motion passes. So our new middle school will be Lone Star, even though that was one of my choices, it wasn't my first choice, that's why I voted against it. I still like the idea of naming it Veterans, but that's good. So I like the idea of us having a L. We went through a great process. I thank everyone for their input. I certainly thank our board team for taking this seriously, for being very patient throughout the process, for taking their fair share of hits and criticism and doing so in a very professional manner. So I appreciate our board team taking this seriously, and I'm excited that we can, even though this is very important, I think it's important for a number of, a number of reasons, but I'm ready for us to move forward and concentrate fully on student performance and some of the other things that we talked about earlier this evening, and the things that we're accomplishing as a district. So I'm looking forward to us working on that as a board team in the future. Our next item is item 12. That's Consider Approval of Targeted Improvement Plans. We got those last week. They're not part of our board packet this week, but they were last week. And in addition to that, I think there, if we had any questions, we were instructed to visit with Ms. Huddleston or Mr. Underwood or others that worked in preparation, in preparing those. Some of the things that we talked about last Monday was the TEAs requiring improvement plans, even though there weren't tests, there were no STAR tests taken last year, so we're having to do improvement plans for campuses that we believe have made significant improvements. But we'll, I'll turn it over to Shelley, it looks like she's willing to fill us in.
First of all, just thank you to everyone for what has really been a great evening. Super excited for our St. Angelo Reeds and got to be a part of that, and that was a great thing in our community, and just appreciate the community involvement that we have here. Dr. Duttloff, Mr. Lehman, members of the board, tonight, Mr. Underwood and I are presenting to you our targeted improvement plans for the 2021 school year. Wes and I have the great privilege of working with some amazing principals who've worked very diligently in creating plans that reflect the intentional work that they're carrying out on a daily basis, striving toward academic success. Just a little background for you and for our community, all campuses in St. Angelo ISD currently have the same academic rating. That is that this year they are labeled not rated, declared a state of disaster, and that's the official rating from the Texas Education Agency. St. Angelo ISD still carries its overall rating of a B. However, as Mr. Lehman was just saying at the beginning of this, the Texas Education Agency has required that all campuses who in the 2018, 2019 school year were in need of either comprehensive support or received an F will still be required for this school year to submit and follow a targeted improvement plan. And as we talked about this a little bit last week, this whole idea of accountability has been a little bit like capturing Jell-O. It's hard to know exactly what's going to happen. And even since our, my report, Wes and I's report last Monday, this Thursday on December the 9th, TEA again put out a new declaration, and that is that A through F will be suspended again this year. So for the 2020, 2021 academic school year, there will not be A through F ratings for any districts or for any campuses. And we don't exactly know what that's going to mean for us. One of the things about the rating system that we didn't really talk about last week, but has just come to light as far as this goes, is that our ratings are both state ratings and federal ratings. And so federal accountability has to do with the comprehensive support that we have talked about, and that is not the state's decision, that's the Fed's decision. And so with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, we're just waiting to find out what the federal government says about that portion of our accountability. But as far as the state goes, there will be no A through F, and that, like I said, that just happened on Thursday. A little more clarification just for you on our ratings, in our elementary campuses, only our current fifth graders have ever taken a STAR test. TEA is saying that they will give STAR this year, that we will give STAR this year, and the purpose of that test will be just to look at achievement of individual kids, but again, not of campuses. So it looks like we will have third, fourth, and fifth graders in our elementaries, and then our secondary, sixth, seventh, eighth, and our end-of-year courses, in the five end-of-year courses we have, it looks as if we will still give those tests, but they will not be part of the ratings. So one of the things that we talked about a little bit is that because this is such backward-facing data and is going to continue to be backward-facing data, for example, our fifth graders, I looked specifically at Bel Air Elementary, and those fifth graders that took the test two years ago as third graders, we had about 20 students who were struggling in their proficiency for reading. And so if you think about that in terms of the accountability for the whole district, those 20 struggling students make up only 8% of Bel Air's current student population. So their accountability rating is actually based on the test scores of 8% of their kids. Also to know that the TIP plans do reflect a combination of schools who are either in improvement required or fall under comprehensive support. Comprehensive support is what I was saying, is the federal accountability. Those are Title I campuses who score in Domain 3, which is about closing achievement gaps, still needed some improvement. And so it's important to know that among those campuses, Glenn McGill and Altaloma had already received a label in 2019, '20 of comprehensive progress. They were slated to move completely out of the need to file a TIP plan. And then, as so many times it's been said this tonight, and then COVID. So because of the freezing, everyone has to continue to submit that plan for this year. So all of our TIP plans focus on the Effective Schools Framework, and those are put in place to identify five prioritized levers, including strong school leadership, positive school culture, objective-driven daily lesson plans, and data-driven instruction. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Underwood to explain a little bit more about how we are focusing on each campus on those levers.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you, board. Want to talk just a little bit more in detail about our levers that the campuses are working on under the Effective Schools Framework. And each one of those, in the previous slide, you can see which campuses, we're focusing on which particular levers from those frameworks. Kind of goes all the way through that. Lever number one is our developing campus instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities. Many of our principals at the elementary level and secondary levels are receiving executive coaching through Engage to Learn, and also direct support from Ms. Reeve Braden, who's our Director of Campus Academic Support. She's working primarily with our elementary campuses, but is doing a phenomenal job in leading those discussions and leading those processes on those campus campuses to make sure that principals and instructional coaches and assistant principals and everybody on those, on those teams know what their roles are, and those are clearly defined. Part of that is developing consistent protocols for our campus leaders to use and department grade-level teams and our professional learning communities, or PLCs, that focus on student progress and formative data. Job-invented professional learning and coaching is also provided by campus instructional leaders. Prioritized Level 3 is around our positive school culture, and our stakeholders are engaged in mission of school and surveys and feedbacks. In fact, we just recently finished up administering our Panorama surveys to our staff, students, and parents who had an opportunity to participate as well. And that data has just come back in, and our principals are currently going through that and getting ready to share that with their staffs as well. Development and communication of vision and mission with a shared understanding and policies and practices that demonstrate high expectations for student success. We know that when we have high expectations, our students often, more often than not, rise to meet those expectations, and we continue to do that as well. Prioritized Levers 5.1 and 5.3 are around effective instruction, objective-driven lesson planning, and data-driven instruction. And so many of our campuses are really focusing on these as a priority from elementary all the way up into secondary. And this is for our clear daily lesson plans that align to high-priority learning standards. Review of lesson plans with feedback, making sure that they are aligned with the work that we truly need to be focusing on to get our students to where we want them to be. Reviewing of our disaggregated data to track student progress, whether that's on formative assessments or whether that's through our MAP assessment, which is our measurement of academic progress we give three times a year. Effective PLCs that include action planning specific to student needs and protected time built into our master schedules for students to plan, reflect, and have in-depth conversations around these complex topics. And then, of course, making sure that we are tracking our student progress with measurable goals. With that, we will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Ms. Huddleston and Mr. Underwood. Any questions for one or both of them?
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
I'll just need to make a motion to approve.
Right. Correct. So I'll make a motion that we approve targeted improvement plans for Altaloma Elementary, Austin Elementary, Bel Air Elementary, Goliad Elementary, Holloman Elementary, McGill Elementary, Glenn Middle School, Lee Middle School, and Lincoln Middle School. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Gallegos reminded me that there is no Lee Middle School anymore, but it's still that way until we, so...
It's been voted on, Lone Star Middle School.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there a second from Mr. Dindel? Other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is the district calendar for 2021, 2022. Ms. Hollihan's going to help us with that.
Board members, Dr. Detloff, it is always an exciting time to talk about the New Year's calendar. Guidelines for the 2021, 2022 school calendar include 75,600 minutes of student instruction, and to include two bad weather days, that we need to increase that to 76,440 minutes of of instruction. The calendar must include 187 teacher contract days. So next year, the first day of instruction will begin on Wednesday, August 18th, to 2021. Due to the success of the Thanksgiving break this year, and following the example of most districts across the state, two trade days have been incorporated for staff, which they can obtain targeted professional learning in the summer, allowing them the week of Thanksgiving for holiday. The calendar has the typical two weeks of Christmas. Spring break is scheduled for March 14th through 18th, 2022. Again, Texas Tech has their spring break out, but Angelo State University still does not have their spring break scheduled for 2022 yet. The last day of instruction is May 27th, 2022, and then graduation will be held on Saturday, May 28th, 2022. Professional learning days are utilized towards the end of each grading period for instructional design work. I know that was fastened, but I'm asking the board to approve the calendar recommendation as presented for the 2021, 2022 school year. Do you have any questions?
Questions from Ms. Hollihan? We went over this last week.
I did.
Pretty good detail. Thank you. Any questions from our board team?
Let me just, since we're on television, just to make sure I've got these dates. So we start on August 18th.
Yes, sir.
And then all the students will be off all the weekend of Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir.
And then there'll be two weeks for Christmas from December 20th, and then come back January 4th.
Yes, sir.
And then we do have a spring break starting March the 14th.
Yes, sir.
And then where, if all goes well, last day of school is May 27th. So we're before before the Memorial Day weekend.
Yes, sir.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Max, for reviewing that. Yeah, and that's, we, as we discussed a little bit last week, we're trying to, we usually try to make our spring break correspond with other districts and other universities' spring breaks, but we're having some trouble getting everybody to commit to that. But we wanted to go ahead and get our calendar done. And we do know that Texas Tech is going to be off, and since Angelo State's part of the system, we might assume that. But that's just an assumption currently. And I believe UT's is, UT hadn't announced one yet, have they?
Oh, University of Texas is the same time.
Okay, okay. The schools next year aren't having one. You know, this, this, in 2021, they're not, a lot of the, a lot of the universities are not having a spring break.
Correct.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the district's 21, 22.
I'll make a motion to approve the San Angelo ISD's district calendar for 2021, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Dr. Kingman. Any other board comments or question? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. That concludes our meeting agenda for this evening. As far as announcements, we do have a PACE graduation, drive-through graduation on Thursday, beginning at 2:00. That's in the PACE parking lot. Our financing pre-agenda board workshop is January 11th. We're scheduled to be at City Council for school board recognition on January 19th of 2021 at 8:30. They do a pretty good job of letting us go first in their recognition. So if everybody can be there for that, that'd be great. And our regular board meeting is January the 19th, which is a Tuesday, since the 18th is a school holiday. So that covers our announcements. Anything other business that we need to have or items that a board member might want to put on a future agenda? If not, and wishing everyone the best of, merryest of Christmases and great holidays, I'll, in here, no objection. We'll stand adjourned.